All right, it is 4:31. I will call the meeting to order. We are missing Pat, Dave, and Deb. And we will stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Our Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, I will look for a motion to approve the agenda.
Make a motion through the agenda.
Motion by Tim.
Second.
Second by Chad. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, our only topic of business is the listening session, so I will turn it over to Gary Lee.
Very good. I'm glad you guys have made it here tonight. I'm just gonna be pulling up a few things. And I can pull up one file here. Once I get that done, then we can get rolling. But we have the three questions tonight. And you should have got a link on the... On an email for you to input your answers to those questions. And we're just gonna talk them through a little bit tonight, so that you can hear what other people have to say. And that maybe will bring a few more things to mind as you actually fill in the information. So the key here is that we want input from everybody. We don't want it just from... Just from, you know, the loudest person in the room. All right? So that's the key. And so everybody gets to have their voices heard. So I just got... I had a phone call that interrupted me right before this meeting. My first cousin, I was on the Lee side. I'm one of the oldest cousins. And then the one right after me just passed away just now. I just found out about it, so...
Oh, I'm sorry to hear that.
Busy trying to get ahold of the rest of the relatives here. Just give me a second here to get into what I need to get into. All right, found it finally. Very good. Okay, so, you know, the first thing... I know all you guys. And so the first thing on the list is talking about the pluses for our school. You know, and what are the big things that you see as a real benefit to Leroy Olds Grand?
Right off the top of my head, I'm thinking the cooperative we have a SMEC for our Sped students. And the opportunities we have that they offer for like ALC, special education kids, things like that.
Actually, I'm just gonna let you break a little bit on those forms. I want if you take a few minutes, and it's just four of us, and put a few ideas down in all three of those questions. You know, just I want to give you about five minutes to do that, and then we'll start it. Unless you've already filled one.
No, not yet.
Do you wanna do this like individually or just talk them over?
Nope, individually. That way everyone has their own... Yep. I have the doors are locked. Pat's trying to get Dylan. Can you run over and get my pad in? Thank you. Here, there, doesn't matter. We are on this section. We're just kinda writing down by things and we'll go through them all together.
Okay. What do you guys think? You got enough written down that we can get started? All right. So first, you know, we started talking about the pluses. And this is just meant to be a free-for-all as far as the conversation is going. And so we're just looking for things that you have on your list. And the first thing that came out was, before Pat got here, was SMEC and the ALC and some of the things that you're doing for your special ed kids. So what else do we have for pluses for LO?
I had class sizes, Title Ones, that we offer Cardinal Care and Cardinal Kids. And we are bringing back ECFE, which is really popular for the birth-to-age fives.
And you said card... You know, you gotta slow down a little.
Sorry. Sorry.
So you said ECF... You said class sizes, ECFE, and what else did you have? Title One?
Title One, and then I have Cardinal Kids and Cardinal Care.
Okay, now I just lost all your audio. It's happened to us one other time, two other times.
Okay, hold on.
And is Dylan still there?
Yep, he's right over there.
Yes.
Okay, hold on, he's working on it.
I'll let you know when I start hearing.
You are being recorded.
I know, but we're doing a Jeopardy thing.
There we go.
Okay, we're back now.
I can hear you, but I can't see you.
Well, that's a plus.
Okay, so, yep, and I had the Cardinal Care, Cardinal Kids program as well.
I don't have Cardinal here. Okay? What else do we have?
I had class sizes as well. We have LO forever, which has been helping the school for years. I also put down that we're financially sound. And then I also put down that our staff in general.
Got it. Good.
I put class sizes as well. Teaching staff is great to work with and collaborates with students well. Our student support center is probably the best in the consortium. And we challenge students to be creative and think outside the box.
Chad?
I had Title One and Wingtime, student mentors, targeted services.
How about Pat?
So I only had three down, and one of them was the small class sizes. And obviously, being a farmer, I put down that we have a strong ag program. And I also did, it ties in with the whole SMEC thing, that kids with the learning disabilities are taught well.
Yep. All right. So let's... Let's take a look at some of the things that we think we can improve on as far as the second question. What do you have there? And what kind of things would you like to talk about?
I'll lead it off. I had class offerings. I'd like to see more technical classes and more art classes. More PSEO opportunities, extracurricular things other than just sports. Make sure our kids are college-ready. And I had the fourth.
Slow down, slow down here.
Sorry.
All right. All right.
I got it. And, you know, some of these, you know, the hands-on stuff, like the technical classes and art classes, that's one I agree for the kids also.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, I had the same thing about more PSEO offerings. And then I had another one said team up with, you know, colleges for some of the hands-on learning trade school stuff. Also, you could probably team up with some local businesses and do some job shadowing. I do some job shadowing with some other schools. So the kids can get a feel for what they have a like for and dislike for.
So do you have... I heard earlier that from someone else that you do allow for kids to do some things first hour and last hour, correct?
Yeah, if they have a job or... Yeah, yep, yep, yep.
Okay.
The other schools, we've done this with... The students with me for the whole day. You know, they get the whole day to job shadow. So I'd like to see maybe something with that.
How often, Tim? I'm just... I don't mean to interrupt ya.
Um, I guess it depends on their interest and what, you know, what they have time for too. Some of the other schools do team up with the tech schools, and they're able to take a semester of carpentry. Those students are able to go and take a semester of carpentry. And, you know, I think that's pretty awesome.
I do too.
That's what we...
Absolutely.
A couple of the other ones I had, Gary, were more staff development. I had another thing on just general accountability with our policies and everything. And that was it.
Chad?
I had curriculum and technology updates, hiring practices. And then I had the PSEO as well.
Say that again, curriculum, hiring practices. I missed the second one. What was the second one?
Curriculum and technology updates, hiring practices, and then I had the PSEO.
So where you guys think you are as far as technology is concerned within the school?
We all look at Dylan and he turned around.
I think we're...
This has nothing to do with him. It means what else can you guys spend money on to, you know, to... When you talk about technology, what type of specific stuff are you thinking of?
Well, I know like, you know, before when we had some classes that we couldn't get teachers in for, that we didn't have someone, they did, you know, like online classes. And, you know, we would have, you know, breakdowns and the cameras wouldn't work. Or like, you know, Dylan and I talked about earlier, you know, some of the microphones for that thing weren't working. And I can't remember the last time we upgraded the laptops for the high school kids. So I know the iPads are kind of hanging on, but we may need to look at some of the iPads. And, you know, the laptops for the older kids. Go ahead, Chad, it was yours.
That's what I was thinking, because we went out and bought my kids our own laptops, because the schools do not keep up with what they need.
That was two years ago.
Yeah.
That was three years ago.
Yeah, Dylan, I don't know what the girls' names is, because...
So what else do you need, Dylan?
Yeah, what else do you need, Dylan? Now's your chance, it's like curse moving.
I'm not a part of this. I'm just saying it in the background.
All right, sounds good.
Okay. Pat, you wanna go?
Hey, Pat?
You know, you said we're right here, so I filled this one out. I didn't fill this one out.
Oh, we'll keep you and come back. Pat, you wanna go?
Sure. More class electives, obviously. We're lacking in that department. Better curriculum, quality curriculum. I think that's been dated for a while. We're in a curriculum cycle to upgrade, so that's kind of a good thing that we're seeing. I put more qualified teachers to teach. What I mean by that is getting qualified teachers to teach, hard to teach these PSEO classes. I'd like to see that more. And I put staff development as well.
Something that came to mind for me, Gary, is it seems like we always end up with teachers teaching with a variance, you know, that are not teaching the area where their strength is. And I'd like to see us get away from that.
Yeah.
I know that's difficult because, you know...
But you hear the kids talking about it. Yep. Some of the kids are really honest.
Yep.
Yeah.
Yep, I hear things. I know.
Yep.
So, you know, as far as the staffing is concerned, you know... You know, what can we do, do you think? And this isn't not for tonight's topic. It's just something to start thinking about. You know, when we're seeing this staffing shortage throughout the whole United States, you know, as far as, you know, teachers are concerned, and we're seeing teachers not going into the profession. Is there, you know, just keep that in mind. Is there something that you as a board can actually do or you as a school district can do in order to get these people in there? Because we're just not seeing... We got schools throughout the state. You know, when I was on the board, when we'd have an opening for an elementary teacher, you may have a hundred apps coming in for a little ton of fertile. You know, and now you're lucky if you can find one app, you know, to get someone to apply for the job. So just comments, more things to think about as we're moving forward.
So there's one thing, Gary, where I wrote in or write up before that what can we do to get more student teachers in this school? Because if you couldn't get in the school, you got a lot better chance of keeping them. You know, the only... We get an ag teacher, student teacher, but what else have we ever had?
Nothing.
We've never had one outside of that.
Right.
Do the teachers have to have some kind of special licensure or something to have a student teacher? Or does anybody have one?
We actually partner with, like I remember the contract I signed. It was for South Dakota College that we signed an agreement to allow them to send their student teachers here. I don't know how long... I said I signed it for this year. I don't know how long this has been happening, but we got nobody coming here. But one thing I mentioned to, when we were talking about this a while ago, what SMEC used to do is, or what actually, I think they still do, is Denise and Dan actually go to colleges, and they talk to the kids that are graduating, and they pull them in that way. And I know that Jen and Aaron used to do it, but they quit. So we haven't had anybody for a long, long time.
Yeah.
You know, what we're seeing, we're seeing in some of these prep programs that there's hardly any kids actually going enrolling in a teacher prep program at Winona or in the South Dakota schools or at Mankato State or at Morehead State or even the U. So that's where we're just seeing the numbers are just drastically going down. So this is a big problem. This is a huge problem. So and I don't know what the answer is, but...
Convince MDE to allow teacher degrees or teacher licenses for in other states?
Yeah, but even that is... That's just, I agree with that. We have something that we all have to work on. And it's something we are working on. But that still isn't gonna change the dynamics, because those states are also short of people to...
Do other states around us let other teachers from Minnesota go to Iowa without... So we're at a disadvantage.
It's a lot less rigorous to get something in another state than it is... It's the same thing with nursing. It's a beast to come from another state to get a license here. But you can go the opposite direction, and it's a whole lot easier.
Yeah. Well, that's a problem.
That's very true. Is there anything else as far as things you... Kind of, as we're writing things down, things that could be improved on?
I would like to see... I know we do a lot of communication, but a lot of, more of consistent communication. So like when we say that we're gonna start a program, you know, like for the kids that do, say, the work-study thing, you know, to get their last or first hour off. You know, we don't tell the parents where they need to go to ask questions. It's just that we do this. So we need something that tells parents where they need to connect with to get the right person, like PSEO. Who do the parents contact? I have no idea. Who does the parent contact for this or this? We need to do a better job conveying to the public where they need to go to get the answers that they need.
Anything else? If not, let's get out to vision, all right? And look at that question. When you see, how do you envision the Leroy Olds Grand School District in three to five years?
Is this where we want to see it be or where we think it's gonna be?
Okay. I mean... I know. Mind our own thirty with hopefully.
Yep.
It's your vision of where you wanna go. Go ahead, guys. Whenever you're ready, there's something else to talk.
I guess the couple of things I had, Gary, were, you know, is it... I'd like to see some sort of industrial arts program back in the school district. I know there's smaller schools close to us that still have those programs. Whether we offer them in-house or be able to get with a technical school to offer them.
So is it fair to say we want more, I just lost it, career in tech, CTE? Career and technical type yassas is what we're looking at?
Yep. And I guess that's, you know, offer them, but then also more guidance as well. You know, some of the kids have a lot of questions. And they really don't know when they're graduating what they wanna do. So I mean, there's been a few of last year's seniors that are actually just kind of working, doing different jobs, trying to figure out what they wanna do. So can we help them so they don't have to do it for themselves, so to say? And then the other thing, I guess my wish would be to start with building a foundation, and we keep building on it. You never stop. You know, if you stop, you're gonna start losing ground and going backwards. So how we build that foundation and what we offer for the kids and work with the community, I think we've gotta start building it somehow.
I had for the next three to five years, hopefully maintain, if not increase enrollment. I had the same thing for Tim, offer more tech classes. And I'm gonna throw in more art classes. I know one of the most popular things I had was photography. You got to learn how to use the camera and develop your own stuff. And then I'd like to see that all graduates that go on to college are ready for college courses. That we're not having, you know, graduates and, you know, kids at the top of their class having to take remedial college classes because they're just not ready for even basic English one at college.
You know, we do have a couple of kids that graduated, and they had to take some remedial classes. So that doesn't sit well. You know, you don't wanna hear that at all. So obviously, they weren't ready.
I had increased enrollment, more offerings for students to be college-ready. And then I had build arts and music programs.
Very good. I had enrollment increasing. I had teachers for all subjects in place. I had more college classes available in-house, whereas we have teachers that are certified to teach college classes, so it's not all online. And I also had all the staff working together in unison, more continuity.
Gary?
I had more quality class offerings to kind of go off of what everyone else has said. More staff development. I think that's always gonna be a continuous operation to continue working on every year. I put better quality curricul... Uh, communication, I'm sorry. Better quality communication. I think that's another thing that is always gonna be worked on. Upgraded curriculum is looking better. I think it's not where it needs to be. And then my last one is increased test scores. I kind of falls in between getting them ready for college. I mean, I kind of look at those test scores and look at what we're doing well and what areas we need to move on.
One thing I haven't heard from you guys is... One thing I haven't heard from you guys is anything about facilities?
Yeah, we've, we've had some discussions on buildings and grounds. There's been some talk of an HVAC project, but, um... You know, we, we just don't know what that's gonna entail, you know, what's the dollar amount. I think it's gonna, gonna be fairly significant to get that done. So, you know, just like anything else, you gotta decide how much money you wanna stick into. Stick into something and what's, what's the community willing to get behind?
Yep. That can's been kicked down the road a long time.
Correct, but the problem is, is in 2015, the operating levy's gonna come due.
Twenty twenty-five.
Or, sorry, yeah, twenty-five, the operating levy's gonna come due, and twenty-eight, the pool levy's gonna come due. And then you have now the fifty-six project, city's gotta pay for half that upfront, and, you know, so I mean, in the next, you know, five, six years, we're all gonna get hit hard with taxes.
And we have one of the highest operating levies already, Gary. So, I don't know what that's gonna...
Yep.
I don't know what that's gonna look like, but it doesn't pass.
Alright. Is there anything else you guys wanna talk about? We made it through to less than a half hour, because we have just five of us here. Everything good? Do you have the link, do you have the link then for, so go ahead and input your information. Make sure the other two board members are also getting their stuff input. And then I have the community now in an hour. Or Dylan has to hang around for another two hours.
Is there a certain timeframe that you'll need Dave and Deb just to get theirs submitted by, like, Friday?
I want it this week, you know, in the next couple of days, it would be the best.
Okay, so I will tell them by Thursday?
Yep. And then when we can get all, everything collected, and I can start putting all this information together, so we can get ready for our next meeting, and I didn't hook that up, do you have it off the top of your head?
I've got it in my board book, hold on.
The ninth or no, I thought I have one.
The ninth sounds right. Yes, the first strategic planning meeting is the ninth.
Alright, so we got two weeks to go. Alright, we start planning, if we can get all this stuff put together, then we will get ready for that meeting. And then at that time, we should have a handle on, you know, who the new board members are. And get them in place, uh, you know, as part of this process also, so...
So the survey, the survey that everybody just did, are we gonna, you're gonna have all that stuff tallied for the ninth?
Yep. Yep, everything's gonna be ready for the ninth, and also, we'll start to work with Jen, 'cause she, part of the big, uh, part of that first meeting is just a state-of-the-union type address, state of the school district from Jen, where she sees things, and what's going on. So, she'll be working on that, and then we'll start the process of developing our mission and vision and belief statement, and start going down that road, so... Okay?
Sure. Sounds good.
Alright, well, that's great, thanks, guys, and I'll sign off though for the next hour, not quite an hour, and we'll get the community enrolling too, with that, hopefully we'll get a good turnout, so...
Let me double-check one thing, even though we went through this with you, you still want us to submit it, or no, we're just the two that have...
Yes, I'd rather have you submit it, 'cause I'm, I'm taking notes as we go along. I did not do that for the other groups, because the groups were so small, you know, that I just took notes, and we're gonna use that, but I just assumed each of you input it that way. If something else comes in your head, that you either didn't wanna say in public, or just something new that comes, you can put it in there.
Yep, there would be some of that.
Okay. Like I said, you are on camera, yes.
Yep.
Alright, if there's nothing else, Gary, we'll plan to see you on the ninth at four o'clock.
Sounds good, very good.
Thank you.
Thanks, Gary.
Thank you.
Yep.
You too.
If nobody has anything else, we look for a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn?
Motion by Tim.
Second.
Second by Pat, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, adjourn at 5:06 PM. Thank you, Dylan.